Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regularly scheduled school board meeting for June 24th. At this time, if everyone could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I will go ahead and call our meeting to order tonight. First item of business is the approval of the agenda. There are no additions or removals of agenda items. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jackie, second by Sakoudin. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries on a 4-0 vote. Next on the agenda is one of our favorite portions of the agenda. It is our recognition portion of the agenda. First off, I'd like to welcome Dakota United Hawks head coach Scott Oxley to the podium to introduce us to the adapted softball state champions in the CI division.
So once again, I'm Scott Oxley. I'm the head coach of the CI Hawks softball team. Thanks so much for having us. Thanks. Thank you to all members of the school board, Superintendent Mary Krieger. Thank you. So for the first time ever, I'm proud to introduce to you the CI state champions in softball for 2024. This is also the first CI title in any sport since the year 2015. What an amazing state tournament for the number one seed Hawks. Coming from behind in both the semifinal game versus New Prague and the championship game versus Lakeville to win state by a score of five to four in the bottom of the seventh inning. The team finished the season 10-1, almost a perfect season. The relationship shared, extra effort, and continuing to build a positive culture has given us, to us, continued success over the last few years. So another honor bestowed onto our team. I was contacted last week by Kevin Bertle of the Star Tribune. He had told me that all ballots named the CI Dakota Hawks as the adaptive sports team of the year for the year 23-24 school year. Tomorrow night, players and parents will attend the AMSA banquet at Target Field, celebrating our continued success observed over the last couple of years. As four years ago, we were the state consolation winner. Three years ago, we took third place. Last season, we were state runner-up, and this year, state champions. Also, on July 6th, we've been invited again to Target Field for the Spring Champions Day. The Hawks will walk the field, be recognized before, at the start of the Minnesota Twins and Houston Astros game at 110. So I'd like to now recognize our individual members of the Hawks. So I'm going to ask you either to wave or step forward, whatever you'd like to take and do. First, second baseman Miles Johnson. Infield outfield, Chelsea Lubickson. Catcher Henry Isley also scored the game-winning run. Natalie Soul, who I've got to say is our best baserunner. When we do rundowns, she's the person I pick. Ada Kramer, catcher outfield. Colin Price, shortstop. Mackay Smith outfield. Mark Man Warren pitcher. Kyle Jacobson, first baseman. Jeffrey Rosga outfield. Jeffrey Rosga is from the Two Rivers District. So happy to have him. Sam Cluff, he is our designated hitter. Jacob Stats, third base outfield. Not with us tonight, Delaina Van Doren, as she should be recognized, and Nick Vaughn. Assistant coaches, just wave or Jeff. So we have Jeff Anderson, who celebrated his 20th year coaching the CI softball program. What dedication to our team. And not new to this this year, but new Jenny Klotz. So I'd also like to mention players named to the all tournament team. You can take and wave. We have Eastview senior Kyle Jacobson, once again, our first baseman, and one of our two team captains. Our pitcher Rosemont senior Mark Man Warren, also team captain. And shortstop Rosemont junior, we get them back, Colin Price. And special thanks to our dedicated coaches, fans, parents. Special thanks to our Booster Club and outgoing president of the Boosters, Chris Man Warren, who I repeatedly say, after coaching a good handful of years, the best Booster Club president I've ever worked with. Their help made all this possible. And of course, Eastview Athletic Director Matt Percival, who oversees the Hawks program, who has helped to support my decisions after becoming the head coach four years ago. Thank you. State champions, CI Hawks. Thank you.
What's that? You want to hit it once? Go ahead. Oh, how fun. Perfect. There you go. I couldn't have done anything better myself. Congratulations. Congratulations. Excellent. Next, I'd like to welcome Dakota United Hawks head coach Brett Kozdowski to the podium to introduce us to the adapted softball state champions in the PI division.
All right. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, School Board members, and Superintendent Krieger. Thank you for having the Dakota United PI Hawks here as state champion for softball as well. I would be remiss without saying how proud I am of that CI group that just left. Coach Scott Coonsey and I, we coach, as you know, the soccer and the floor hockey programs with those students, and we have been banging our head against the wall for years against the Lakeville Blazing Cats. So I just want to say congratulations to them. I am so proud of them for all their accomplishments and for finally climbing that hill. But now it's on to our PI state champion softball team, which is the first time Dakota United has won both leagues, CI and PI, in the same tournament ever since 1991. So that's amazing. I would like to personally thank Superintendent Mary Krieger for all of her support over these years. I wish you nothing but the best in your retirement. I look forward to our new superfan, Michael Balsoni, who will be taking over the reins, and our athletic director, Matt Percival, for all that he has done to support our program. I would also like to congratulate Sandra Seder on her retirement, as she is one of Dakota United's biggest fans as well as an athletic director. So congratulations to y'all. So as you may or may not know, we've been up here a few times. We are four-time defending champions of the state high school softball adapted program. We have had our accolades. We've also had our turmoil from time to time, and we have also not lost a game since 2018. Because of that stat, every game that you go into, you know that you have a target on your back. And these kids show just perseverance like none other. When everybody just is aiming for you, and they want to piece you, and they want to knock off these champions that haven't lost a game since 2018. Because of the COVID years, we lost two of those seasons, but four years in a row, we have won the championship. We came up against a very tough Robbinsdale team in the championship game. We were down a couple of runs, and the perseverance that these kids showed was just so cool. They came together without any leadership from the coaches or anything like that saying to do it. They came together, they bonded, and they said, "We've got to do it, guys. It's us. It's now or never." They came back. We won the game five to four in that championship game, and I couldn't be more proud of this team. We lost a lot of players over the years, and we just keep rebuilding. We have a camp every summer that kids are dedicated to. This year, we have 70 students in the CI and the PI camps, 70 in our district. We have teams that we play against that struggle to get, you know, 10 to 15 kids to play, and we have 70. So it's a dedication to the program that is doing all these things for the CI and the PI programs. And it's the support from you guys and our administration in this district that allows us to do this. So we just thank you so much for honoring us and for having us here. We're going to say the kids' names here. If they want to give a little wave, that'd be great. We've got Dominic Elvis. We've got Ben Schusler. We've got Bennett Herman. Bryce Andrews. Over here, we've got Jay Bama. Reese Martin. Chloe Shabata. Sammy Slammin, Sammy Jordanheim. We got Dylan Burns, Liv Grossbauer, Kayden Needham, and my right-hand man, Coach Scott Coonsey. We want to thank you guys for having us out here. We love being here, and we hope to be back next year.
Rose to the podium to introduce us to the girls softball third-place finishers.
Good evening, board members, Chairperson Johnson, and Superintendent Krieger. Thank you for extending the invitation to recognize and introduce the coaches and players of the 2024 softball team who were conference champion champions and finished third in the state tournament. I'm Tiffany Rose, the head coach. Participating in the state tournament is not only a victory for the team, but the entire community. Long before the first day of practice, players, parents, families, and friends are hardworking at practice, fundraising, ordering fan gear, and preparing our fields for play. I'm thankful to have continued support from the entire Rosemont community. The group of young women before you today have continued the winning tradition of Rosemont softball. Their final record this season was 23-5, earning them their third-place finish at state. This group brought home four consecutive South Suburban Conference Championships, three section championships in four years, and our third state tournament appearance in four years. Many of these players have contributed not only to the success from this season, but also to our state championship in 2021 and 2023. Several of our 2024 seniors have been members of the varsity team since 2021, and their career record at Rosemont is 95-10. The awards and accomplishments for the 2024 season are extensive. Three All-Conference Honorable Mentions, four All-Conference, five All-Section, three All-State, four All-Metro, two All-Tournament Team Players, two Gatorade Player of the Year nominees, and just announced yesterday, C.C. Hanson is Miss Softball. We spoke as a team often about the fact that continued success of Rosemont softball has not happened by accident. We are not here today because we are lucky or had things go our way a couple of times on the field. We are here because each one of the players standing before you is hardworking, dedicated, excel at their sport, and are passionate about the game of softball. Equally impressive is their team GPA of 3.89. These young women are wonderful examples of student athletes. They know that while softball is important, the classroom and academics are more important. You can see from their GPA that their dedication and hard work goes beyond the softball field. There is nothing better in high school athletics than making it to the state tournament. I know that their experience this season has created lifelong memories. It's an honor to coach such a fine group of young women. At this time, I would like to acknowledge the coaching staff and players, and I'm going to announce, even though we don't have everyone, I'm going to announce all girls that run our roster. Our assistant coaches Craig Esselman and Anthony Dress. Seniors Caleb Artol, C.C. Hanson, Morgan Honeycutt, Grace Nosen, Ari Prinsel, Amelia Ross, Lilly Staff. Juniors Bryn Anderson, Peyton Benson, Jory Frye, Rachel Stone, Tessa Van Hemert. Sophomores Harper Chapey, Julia Wigley, and freshmen Ella Erickson and Anna Price. Thank you to the members of the school board, Chairperson Johnson, and Superintendent Krieger. Have a great summer.
Congratulations. 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 Fantastic. Congratulations. Awesome job.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Awesome job.
Congrats.
Thanks, Coach. Awesome job.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, I'd like to welcome Apple Valley High School Track and Field Athletic Director Corey Hanson and Rosemont High School Track and Field Coach Jay Hatley to the podium to introduce us to the state Track and Field champions.
Good evening, and thank you Chairperson Johnson, Superintendent Krieger, and the rest of the board for having us here tonight. My name's Corey Hanson. I'm the athletic director at Apple Valley High School. So as you can see, Dwayne couldn't be here tonight, but I wanted to take the opportunity to recognize him anyway. To put it simply, Dwayne is one of the best track athletes ever to walk the hallways at Apple Valley High School. Some of his accolades for this season include Minnesota Mr. Track and Field, Star Tribune Metro Athlete of the Year in Boys Track and Field, Minnesota State Record Holder in the 400-meter dash with a time of 46.87. Yes, that means he's run the fastest time ever for any high school athlete in the state of Minnesota in the 400-meter dash. State champion in the 400, Apple Valley High School Record Holder of the 100, 200, and the 400. He was a state runner-up in the 200 this year. The Section 3A 100, 200, 400 champion. The South Suburban 200 and 400 champion, and he signed with the University of Minnesota to run track next season. And the most incredible aspect of Dwayne is that, as amazing as he is in athletics, he's even a better role model. Dwayne has been a leader in our building from the first day he stepped in, a consistent, hard-working young man with a vision for himself, high expectations, and a drive to do what it takes to reach his goals. In my experience, there's nothing more valuable to an athlete's success than having a worthy long-term goal and being willing to put in the work to accomplish it. Dwayne embodies that perfectly. Further, Dwayne's excellence extends far beyond the track. He has earned a remarkable 32 credits through the PSEO program, challenging himself academically just as he does athletically. Dwayne has been ahead of his peers on the track because of his determination and willpower. And thanks to that same work ethic and opportunities offered by District 196, he will now enter his next stage in life at the University of Minnesota, ahead of his peers academically as well. So with that, I just wanted to say congratulations to Dwayne and good luck next year at University of Minnesota.
All right.
Good evening, board members, Chairperson Johnson, Superintendent Krieger. I'm Jay Hatley, the head coach at Rosemont High School, and I would like to say I'm really happy Dwayne Smith is graduating from Apple Valley High School. We don't need to see that guy anymore. But he was phenomenal. He was extremely talented. I'm here to introduce my team, or a representative group of my team, for winning the 2024 Minnesota State High School League Track and Field Championship a couple of weeks ago. We have a very small representative group here today, four guys. Just for perspective, we had 16 individual athletes that qualified in 13 events. And so that was our state meet, that was our state meet team, and we needed every single one of those points. We edged that up by one point to get it done. So every single guy, every single point was needed. We'll highlight a few of them here. Much like, I feel like I could echo Tiffany's speech, this group has been around for so long. They've won three of the last four state championships. Some of these guys have been around in one capacity or another for all of it, and they've just had a great run, and it's really sad to see some of these guys go. But we also have a good young group that we know we can kind of reload with again next year. But just some of the highlights, conference championship, section championship, state championship. I'm just going to mention the names of our individual point scorers at the state meet, the kids that contributed to us winning the state championship meet a couple of weeks ago. To my right here, we have Carter Kringan. He's a triple jumper going to St. Thomas next year, outstanding track athlete. We also had Adam Hanson, the shot put. We had a four-by-eight relay team. Our four-by-one relay team made up of Riddick Collier, Jackson Ganzer, Kealan Johnson, Kavari Flowers, and Ricky Yasson. That group of five kind of combined in the prelims and finals for us. Noah Rodenwald was ninth in the pole vault. Will Riddle was sixth in the discus. J.J. Maternowski was sixth in the high jump. Andrew Schultz with a big third-place finish in the 3200 for us. And then I think we're down to the guys that I have here. So let's just kind of rattle through. Carter, I mentioned, triple jumper, outstanding career for us, really dedicated and talented track athlete for us. Jackson Ganzer, you can step forward and wave, Jackson. Jackson ran on the four-by-four and the four-by-one at the state meet for us. He's one of those guys that's been here for the four-year run. He's been a big-time contributor for us, also going to the University of St. Thomas to run track and field next year. Levi, down on the far end, was the youngster of the group. Sophomore, he ran on our four-by-four this year and the four-by-eight at state, so big things for him in the future. And then, right next to him, probably, not probably, definitely our most decorated individual athlete, Mackie Wieland. Mackie was the individual state champion at 300-meter hurdles, our school record holder, third in the 110s, and then ran a leadoff leg of our 4x400, which we needed. We needed every single point going into that four-by-four. So couldn't be more proud of this group. Just an outstanding run for this team. Couple of things I just want to mention in closing, and I say this every year that we're here, in the presence of so many administrators and school board members, obviously, we're really appreciative of the facilities that we have. The upgrades in the last few years have really given us the tools to win state championships. And it's not a small thing. It's a big thing for our teams to be able to compete at the state level with the various upgrades that we've done. Mr. Roback is here tonight. Mr. Finley, our athletic director, we have outstanding administrative support, as do all of the teams in all of the district schools. But again, there's just things we could not do without them, and we're super appreciative of that. Just want to mention, one last thing for the sporting world, we're super proud of one of our alumni, Peyton Otterdahl, qualified for the Olympics again two nights ago. One of the nicest human beings you've ever met, and just represents our school so well. Every interview I've seen, he's well-spoken. And now he's got Team USA on his chest again, and he's one of ours, and super proud of him as well. So thank you for the opportunities that you've given us and to be here tonight.
Last, but definitely not least, I'd like to welcome Rosemont Middle School Principal Eric Hanson to the podium to introduce us to the 2024 Minnesota Juvenile Officer of the Year.
Yeah. Good evening, School Board members, Chairperson Johnson, and Superintendent Krieger. My name is Eric Hanson. I'm the principal at Rosemont Middle School, and I'm very excited to honor and recognize Officer Paul Larson, the Rosemont High School and Rosemont Middle School Resource Officer, who recently was named Minnesota Juvenile Officer of the Year. Officer Larson prioritizes positive relationships with our students, our staff, and our community. One Rosemont student wrote, "Officer Paul creates bonds and relationships with students that make students feel safe and comfortable. He is someone that you can comfortably talk to no matter what it's about." Another student wrote, "Officer Paul is fully dedicated to protecting the school and his community with everything he has, which is why I love him as our School Resource Officer." On behalf of the Rosemont School community, I'd like to congratulate Officer Paul and thank him for his dedication to our students, our staff, and our community. Thank you.
Before everybody leaves, I would just really like to thank, it takes a whole village to do what we've seen here tonight. It takes dedicated parents. It takes the grandparents who buy the stuff that the students are selling. It takes staff. It takes the whole city. And as a member of the city, somebody that lives in Rosemont, I can say it's really, really phenomenal to me when I hear those sirens going, and I know that our students are going down to their state thing, and they're being escorted out of the city by our fire trucks and our police officers. Tonight, we have in the audience Paul Larson from the City Council, we have our chief of police, and of course, our staff from Paul, from Rosemont Middle, our police officer. And I'd really like to thank everybody who makes those possible. It's not just the school district. It's all of us working in collaboration with each other. So thank you so much. And if you've ever, I don't know if the other schools do that, but you can be outside and you hear the sirens, and you know that another group of kids are going down to state championships. So congratulations, and thank you, and thank you for bringing in the community, all of us together, working with a single goal. So thank you.
Next on the agenda is superintendent's recognition of students and staff, so I will turn it over to Superintendent Krieger.
Hey, thank you. I would like to start by welcoming Kristen Powell. Kristen, wave your hand over there. Kristen is our new executive assistant to the superintendent and the school board. And this is Kristen's second week on the job. In her first school board meeting, she has worked for our district for a number of years, most recently as administrative assistant at Black Hawk Middle School. And so we welcome Kristen to the superintendent's office, and we are all excited to have you work with us. Thank you. And congratulations to all of the District 196 students who competed in the National Speech and Debate Association National Tournament last week in Des Moines, Iowa. Seven District 196 students made the final round of competition in three different speech categories, and two others finished in the top 20 in congressional debate. And congratulations to the Eastview High School baseball team on qualifying for and participating in the Class 4A state tournament this month. And finally, congratulations to our district's communications department on earning an award of excellence. of Excellence from the National School Public Relations Association for the district's 2024 Legislative Priorities Document. Lovely, and very much deserving of that honor. It won in the category of Special Purpose Publications. And earlier this year, Communications Coordinator Alle Guerin won the New Professional Award from the Minnesota School Public Relations Association. And so I just want to give a little shout-out, because I'm not sure everyone realizes, all the work of our Communications Department. They're the ones that help ensure that our board meetings go well, and that our public knows what our story is. So I'd like to thank Tony Tashner, our Director, and Alle Guerin back there as our Coordinator, and behind the scenes, we have Cliff Dodge, and we also have Andrea Egan, and we have quite a team that really work together to ensure that we're communicating our story to our public and to our community. So thanks to all of you.
Excellent. Thank you, Superintendent Krieger. We have no one signed up for special communication request tonight, so that brings us to the consent agenda. Board members, we have 18 items on our consent agenda tonight. They include the minutes of the June 10, 2024 regular School Board meeting, quarterly advertising revenue, gifts, quarterly gifts, grants, summary of claims from May 2024, schedule of investments for May 2024, certified census, depositories for the investment of funds, official depositories of checking accounts, investment instruments, electronic funds transfers, manual signatures of checks $100,000 or more, personnel, pay rates for substitute, temporary, and part-time community education employees, catastrophic accident insurance, Minnesota State High School League Cooperative sponsorship for girls hockey, and stipend for area learning center interim coordinator. Are there any items on the consent agenda that Board members would like to remove tonight? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as outlined?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Sakoudin, second by Jackie. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a 4-0 vote. We have no items under reports tonight, so that brings us to our old business. First item under old business, I would like to welcome Danny Duchene to the podium for our second reading of the 2024-25 Preliminary Budget.
Good evening, Chair Johnson, Superintendent Krieger, members of the School Board, and our District 196 community. Tonight, District Administration presents the 2024-25 Preliminary Budget for a second reading and recommended approval. State law requires school boards to approve a preliminary budget by June 30 each year for the following school year. At the June 10 regular School Board meeting, I presented the preliminary budget for a first reading and review. Since that June 10 meeting, we haven't made any changes to the budget information. The preliminary budget utilizes a combination of projections for unknown variables such as enrollment counts, and known variables such as state formulas, funding formulas, and details for employment agreements finalized already for the 24-25 school year. We will return in December to present the board with the 2024-25 final budget, which will use updated variables and have more concrete information. Included in your board packet this evening is the final draft of the 24-25 Preliminary Budget Book. This budget book is structured and crafted in accordance with the requirements of the standards of ASBO's Meritorious Budget Award, which our district has received for the past nine years. Assuming board action tonight, the budget book will be posted on the district's finance website tomorrow. Respectfully, District Administration recommends approval for the 24-25 Preliminary Budget, and at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. This is an action item tonight, so before we go to questions, is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Jackie. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from Board members. Jackie?
It's just nice to know that it will be on the board on the web. So if you want to look at what we just approved, that is out there for you to look at. Go to the district website.
Thank you. Every time I get a question from the community member on our district's budget, I point him to that budget book.
First place to go, look.
And it is very well outlined and breaks down a very complicated budget into things anyone could understand. So I always, I really appreciate the work that goes into that.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have a motion to approve by Leah, seconded by Jackie. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries on a 4-0 vote.
Thank you.
All right. Next, I would like to welcome Jill Coyle to the podium for the second reading of Policy 801, District Community Relations.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. Before you tonight is old business is Policy 801. Policy 801 describes many aspects of the district's community relations, including its community listening sessions. On June 10, we discussed an administrative recommendation to remove a requirement that community listening sessions be held at schools on a rotating basis. The removal of this language will provide greater flexibility to the board to host these sessions at other locations than schools. This is an old business item tonight, and the administration seeks your approval.
Thank you. This is another action item tonight, so before I go into questions, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is that a second by Sakoudin?
Second.
Okay.
Sorry.
Motion by Jackie, second by Sakoudin. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from Board members? Sounds good. We have a motion by Jackie, seconded by Sakoudin. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a 4-0 vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that brings us to the new business portion of our agenda, and I would like to welcome Jill Coyle to stay at the podium to go over Administrative Regulation 507.2 AR Student Fees and Fines.
Hello again. I am here with one change to the district's fees and fines regulation. That's Regulation 507.2 AR. Among the fees and fines listed in the regulation is the driver's ed fee, and more specifically, it is the behind-the-wheel fee. The administration seeks to increase the fee from $325 to $400. So first, by way of background, behind-the-wheel instruction is an optional service that the district offers. It's a requirement for a driver under the age of 18. They must complete it in order to qualify for a driver's license from the state of Minnesota. In contrast, the district's safety ed course, which provides driver's instruction for credit, behind-the-wheel is not required for graduation, nor does it provide school credit. The district competes with private companies that also offer behind-the-wheel instruction. The administration seeks an increase in the fee due to the rising cost of leasing driver's ed vehicles, as well as maintaining those vehicles, paying for gas and insurance, and then, of course, the staffing associated with running the behind-the-wheel program. This is a review item tonight. It will be back as an action item, as old business, in July, but I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from Board members? Leah?
Yeah. If I may, a general question. This isn't about the driver ed component specifically, but some things in here mention a reduced price, reduced fee for those that are reduced price eligible, and some don't. Is it only in the cases that that's referenced that there's a lower amount or a waive?
Yeah. I wouldn't say it's only where it's called out in the regulation, but I will say specifically to behind-the-wheel, this is not one that typically would qualify for a reduced fee. Schools will sometimes, in certain cases, look for funds that may be able to assist some students, but as a matter of course, it is expected to be more of a self-supporting program, and those funds aren't typically available.
Yeah. And just a follow-up. What I, this is my first chance since coming onto the board to review this and to ask this question, but between now and the next meeting, I guess I would love to know more about the graduation fee, and how much we bring in, and how much we spend on our graduation ceremonies, just because I try to look at everything with a lens of families that are experiencing economic hardship. $50 is actually a lot. You know, that's a trip to the grocery store you might not otherwise have. And in my opinion, if you have met the requirements and you've earned a diploma, you have every right, and we should be celebrating you at a graduation ceremony, with or without any expense. So I would love to not have a graduation fee. It was, this is a new concept to me. I didn't have that growing up in my community. So I'm just curious if that's absolutely necessary that we charge every student in order for them to be able to participate in graduation ceremony, if there's any alternatives. I'd like to see it eliminated, because any threshold where you try to say, only below this amount, may family experience hardship be considered. I'd love to see, for all students, let's just take this off the table as a concern they might have. But at a minimum, I would hope to be able to confirm that any student that acknowledges that they can't afford it but wants to participate, that they're able to. So a series of questions, so sorry.
And we can certainly provide you with some additional information about that fee in particular. What I'll say at this point is it is my understanding that the fee will be reduced or eliminated for students in need. So that is the sort of fee where that would apply. The other thing I would say as to why do we need to have a charge at all, the venue that we need to obtain in order to run those ceremonies can be costly. There's additional security fees, staffing fees, and other associated fees that go into that. And we try to keep that fee just as low as possible in order to still run the program. But let us get back to you with some additional information to answer some of those questions.
Sounds good. All right. Thank you very much, Jill. We will see you back here on July 22.
Thank you.
All right. We have no items under other action item tonight, so that brings us to our Superintendent and Board Member updates. I will turn it over to Superintendent Krieger for her update.
Thank you. First, I just want to remind parents that we have several sites throughout the district where students 18 and younger are able to access free meals this summer. So go to district196.org to get more information about where they are. And lastly, I'll try not to get too emotional, but I do want to say thank you for the honor and the privilege of serving a superintendent for these past six years. It has been a phenomenal opportunity for me, and I think the biggest thing is I have learned so much about how amazing our students, our families, our staff, and our communities are. And I'm just so excited for the future of this district. You have a wonderful superintendent coming forward in Michael Bossoni, and an incredible leadership throughout our district that will continue to serve our students well. And special gratitude goes out to our teachers, who are the ones that make a difference in the classroom every single day. So thanks to all of you. Thanks for taking on service as board members and serving our community well. Thanks.
Well, I can kind of keep that going, because I didn't, I hope you didn't think you were getting off totally scot-free on your last board meeting, but I know we spent the past couple of months already celebrating your retirement, so I just wanted to say, on behalf of the board, I really appreciate your service to the district, all your years, not just to the district, but I'll just say your entire career as an educator, and to the students of Minnesota, because I know it hasn't just been in District 196 as well. The effect can definitely be seen, and it is very much appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Are there any other Board members with item updates or items they'd like to share?
I would like to add to that. I just wanted to say thank you for everything you have done to our community. So your dedication to public education really outshines. And you have led at most difficult times. Few people can just say that, through COVID, through shutdowns and everything. And I've, you know, as a parent in the district, I've been here, so you started here since 2005. I moved here in 2008. Ever since I've been a parent in the district, I've used to get it through voicemails when winter shutdowns and things like that, and reminding us as a school board that there is a meeting or updates. So your dedication is really, you know, outshines. And I wanted to acknowledge your contribution to our district, and wish you the best on retirement that you deserve. So just wanted to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you for everything you have done. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Any other Board members with items they'd like to share? Yes, Jackie?
Well, I hope I can say something. I was even listening to the introductions for the CI and the PI students made me cry, so let's see if we can get through this. It's been the long Minnesota goodbye. We've had parties, and we've had, I think every union has had something for you, every group of people. Last week, it was Mary Krieger Day in Apple Valley. You might have missed it, but it was Mary Krieger Day. She didn't get a crown or anything. I was, no key even. But it was, but what this just tells me of all the excitement and the long Minnesota goodbye is people wanted to say thank you. People wanted to say thank you for the honor that you have brought this district, the feeling of that we all are in this together, and that your voice matters, and that as Mary Krieger, I'm going to go out and seek out your voice. We can talk about the things that you've done to increase access to the district and to you or the superintendent. I know that will continue, but you've doubled the amount of time that your parent groups meet. You have added staff on different, added different kinds of, we've added different kinds of committees. We've taught, we've had students that are much more engaged than they were than they were six years ago when you started. So those are the things that you have left that were not just big bombs or big surprises. They were just things that are worked into the district and will stay in the district, because now they are not, they're just District 196, and this is how we run the show. I have had such a blast working with you. We've had so much fun. And what I think about you, Mary, is the legacy that you're leaving. All the people that, when we've talked about succession planning, or we've talked about who are the people coming up, you are always there caring about tomorrow's leaders. What are we doing? What are the opportunities we can give today's teachers, today's principals to move up into other kinds of positions in the district, or just give them other kinds of valued things? I can't, I don't think the district can thank you enough. I've had a lot of people say, well, you know her, don't you? Would you tell her thank you? I'm like, yeah, I know her. I'll tell her thank you. So from me and from the people that I know in the district, from parents, Kami Kramer and I are going to go sit in the hall and cry. I really want to thank you. It isn't, it isn't an easy job, and like Mary likes to say, it's really not a job, it's a lifestyle. So thank you so much. Thank you to your family for letting your lifestyle be District 196. Thank you. Thank you, Jen.
Any other Board member updates? That brings us to the end of our agenda. You've made it through the last one of your agendas. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Sakoudin. I think I heard Leah first. Second by Leah. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned until Monday, July 22.